Nice meeting with the Boynton Council Board. There is an amended agenda this evening. There wasn't one that passed out, but at the end of the, we will have a closed session for Nomi Lake personnel. So, that is the change to the agenda. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Lloyd Latrell.
Present.
Pat Struble.
Here.
Kent Miller.
Here.
Bob Richard.
Here.
David Peterson.
Here.
Matt Adi.
Here.
Frank Delka.
Here.
Rick Brown.
Here.
Thank you. If you'll stand with me for the dedication of the blood of the United States of America and to the blood for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bob, do you have anything this evening?
You know why I just say it's cold weather complex? Yeah. It's where we're getting colder.
Half way through. Pat? Bob?
Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank everybody that came into the Rotary utility. We had a very good turnout. Had a question from a business person down there. The sidewalks, like in the closet in my career, you don't have to step down. Who is liable if somebody gets hurt there? I understood that the closet got sued a couple of times.
I don't remember the actual. Katie, can you answer that question?
I can check into that.
Kerry, you were?
I was on the council like a ton.
Yeah, so was I. I don't remember that one.
Well, you know, they kind of slide it down and people, we have seniors, yeah, and when they come out of that door and they had packages in their hand, it's like, people have a tendency to slip and fall and they fall into the cars or it was hard to get up and down.
Well, this is actually a step down. They put in rails along.
Yeah, they had the, I don't know if Doug.
The city installed the rails.
Yeah, I don't know if Doug was here, but he had someone come out and check it out and it was supposed to be done according to regulations.
Well, I didn't know if the city was liable for that or if, I mean, it's a city sidewalk. Why would the business be?
Well, that's why we put the rails up back in. They had to dispute that brickwork event. This could not be done by us.
Kerry.
Bizarre. City designed it.
City.
City designed it.
Okay, the other question is, I guess the old laundromat and dairy stores sold and nobody's cleaning the snow off of it. What's the legal part of that? Somebody required?
I think we have an ordinance that's supposed to clean those within so many hours, I think.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, that was just brought to me. I don't know. So, I'm just questioning that something.
Are you sure?
Yeah, pretty sure we've had that. I think that goes back.
Because over the years I've been up, that's brought up. Someone brings that up and I don't know.
Yeah. We just missed the last one.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we're in two places.
Look here, Chris, my other guy. Okay, that's all I want to go.
Thank you, Bob. Free.
How's this coming?
Kent? Frank? Matt? Lloyd?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Katie, do you have anything?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Glenn?
A couple of things. First, animal control. We've been going around that for a while. We'll meet with the community society next week on that. See where they're at. Next week, we also do have a pre-construction meeting for the new super line, the lift station out of the Silver Fox Estates where we're about part of the north campus up there. We're putting in that new line. Comprehensive planning committee is going to meet February 20th. That'll be their next meeting of that full group there. The Power Pool, we had a, well, we reached a tentative agreement, I guess, with Sunflower Electric Co-op out there. So, Garden City has actually officially, I guess, joined the Power Pool now. So, it's kind of a complicated agreement, so we'll get that hammered out. Yesterday, we had a meeting with our Blue Cross Blue Shield representative and they actually gave us some, what appears to be good news on our Blue Cross Blue Shield policy going forward. It'll be slightly different than what we've had in the past, but it looks like we're going to end up with two options rather than the three or four that we've had in the past. But the good news is our premium should hold steady or go down across the board on most of those categories. And so, we'll have a meeting coming forward here with all the employees. We have our new representative, Charlie Kroll, as you remember, was with us for a long time. He has since retired, so we have a new representative, but she'll be out here to answer questions about that. But the good news for us right now is it looks like we'll be able to have a same type, same type of coverage in Blue Cross Blue Shield at probably slightly lower costs is what it's looking at at this point. So, that's good news. The other thing we brought up with them is changing our renewal date because right now we do it in January and we have open enrollment here into February and March is when we usually wrap it up. We'd like to do that in June or July if that's possible because then it would coincide with our budget side. We'd have to have a short year or a long year, but they said they were open to that and they were going to run that test or underwriting and see how that worked out. So, that'd be, that'd be good news if we can do that. I think it would help us a lot in planning going forward in our budget. So, pretty good news as far as that goes.
That's what I was anticipating, isn't it?
Yeah, we were anticipating, yeah, at least some kind of increase there, but maybe have a good point there. So, anyway, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. We have no public comment this evening. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda for January 7th meeting and appropriations 1B. Any more questions or comments on that, on the appropriations agenda?
I got a question on page four of eleven. It's not the amount. I'm just, I saw the gas for the north campus. Are we recouping all our expenditures up there, Glenn, for rental properties?
I don't know if we're getting all of it back because remember, we have, we have different agreements depending on who you are. Some we're paying a flat amount, some they're just paying utilities. So, like with us and with the LEC, we just split that with accounting. Kind of reversed what we've done previously. So, everybody's got a little different agreement on that. I don't, completely works out that we're, you know, completely whole on that. We usually take a look at that at the end of the year or at the end of the budget side.
Is that our agreement, though, that they will pay the utilities?
Well, it depends on who it is.
Without having to redo the lease and all that.
Yeah, and so, well, like with some of it, it's just a percentage of utilities are all the utilities. That, and that's what they're paying to us. Or like with the library, they're not paying, you know, we're, the city is paying for utilities just like the old library did. So, everybody's a little bit different up there. And in the past, we haven't completely recovered all our costs at the end of the year. It just happened.
Well, just so we're.
Yeah.
I have one more question on nine and eleven. Just curious on this vacuum truck. Do we lease that? Which one of those?
That's a lease purchase.
Sam Tander leasing. There are two payments there. Do we, how do we do the back, $28,000, is that for what?
That's a year, that's the year's lease.
A year?
We're on a four-year, four-year buy contract.
We just have one truck, right?
Just the one truck. And I don't know if that's broken into, I truthfully don't know how, why it's broken into those two separate payments. But it's one payment and that's for the one year, the first year payment on that vacuum truck.
That's the one we just got, so.
Yes.
Well, typically on a lease purchase, they'll do the principal and the interest will be separate. They don't show two, two per month.
Is there any other question? I entertain a motion for approval. It's a move by Councilman Adi that we approve of the minutes from January 7th meeting and appropriations 1B. Do I have a second? Counsel, second by Council's approval. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Delka?
Yes.
Struble?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is orders 2138 rezoning on, was it Sonic Drive-In on Highway 24 from A1 agriculture to C2 commercial. A simple move. It's a move by Council Brown that we approve the orders 2138 rezoning. Second by Council Peterson. Any discussion? No further discussion.
They don't completely clear that then.
Yeah, actually, that is their plan probably next year and the next, within the next two years, the plan is to do a complete rebuild of that, very similar to what Casey's doing next year, too, but it's not. And so, the reason why they're getting this piece of land is because the new restaurant's going to be slightly wider than what they've got right now. So, it sounds like they're planning some additions there. So, they need a little more land, so that's all they're doing is purchase a little bit of land so they can mix manhole zone.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, anyway. We take a roll call vote through.
Peterson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Struble?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion period. Next item on the agenda is resolutions. Resolution 2114 dash two fee amendment. Asking this resolution sets the fee schedule for rental property inspection charge by the city. Discussions or questions from council?
I'd just like to make it clear to everyone, we're talking, these fees are, if you have one of three units, it's $10 for the total, not individual units. And 11 classes, $20 total for all, all the units, 11 and more. Is that right?
Kerry, you have a question?
I have a last word. I'd like to address the issue.
Okay, if you'd come forward, please.
I spent between $80,000 to $25,000 each to improve them. When I have a tenant that complains, I take care of it. There's a tenant in the office that talked to me Friday. I took care of his problem. I have another tenant at the screen door, didn't latch. I took care of it. I think I take care of my tenants. I spend a lot of money fixed the month. Now, the fee that you're asking to charge, that's not a large amount. I thought it was going to be 50 bucks, but I just don't think that we ought to have an annual fee, that amount. I know what you're talking about. I've had properties next door that they were terrible and I agree with you that we ought to take care of, take care of those. But I think it's incumbent to us that have nice properties to have to pay an annual fee. That's all I've got.
Thank you, guys. Any more questions from council? Go ahead, Floyd. Floyd, go ahead.
I just have a question for Katie. I own rental properties. Do I have to stand for this vote? Because I have an interest in it.
I don't think you have to. How do you make that choice?
I got a question.
Just a second, Mr. Blue Genus. Okay. Your question, please come up and address the county.
So, on your checklist, is this like a one-time deal that you expect it, like when you first, you submit your house, like say, I'm going to rent this house? Do you have Chris come inspect it once or, you know, how does, how is this going to work on this checklist? Or is it going to be an annual inspection? Every year, we're going to have to do it? Because that's what your original proposal was. I see now that you said you have a checklist.
That hasn't been determined yet. The council will determine whether it's an annual or biannual inspection. Inspection will probably be, it would be best if you get it before the tenants move in and then every couple of years, probably. It depends on what the council elects to do, whether it's annual or biannual.
And then on the fees, I was curious, is that, like you said, if you have X number houses, it was 10 to 15, is that just like $10 a year, $10 per house?
For three units would be $10. For the three.
And then for like 11 plus, it would be $20 total. I guess I got another question. I know Chris owns some rental properties himself. Who's going to be in charge of inspecting his, too? You know, is that going to be a conflict of interest? Just an idea.
I didn't know, I wasn't aware they have rentals.
So, I mean.
I do and I'd be happy to invite, go along with me.
Just a thought, yeah. And like I said, I mean, how many council members also have rental houses themselves? I mean, I know Lloyd said he did. Anybody else have any rental properties?
I got property, but it's not right.
Another question, say, say you buy the house here, you live here and you buy the house beside you. How are you guys going to go about knowing if that, if that property is rented out? How are you going to be able to find the people that might have one or two versus the people that have, say, 10 plus?
Probably by the utility bills. I'd assume Chris was, we were having this conversation earlier today.
Well, yeah, I think the girls upstairs have been, have been keeping track of rentals pretty much. And my guess is we're probably better than 90%. We know 90% or more of the rentals in town. There might be a few. We may have to, in fact, amend the ordinance to require landlords to tell us when they've got new rentals or to keep us updated, keep us abreast of what's going on.
How many rental properties are in Boyd?
Oh, probably 150 or so that I'm aware of.
That's all my questions are.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council?
I just have the response. I think you got to figure out what you're going to do before you pass something and decide later to change it.
We're going to decide if this is a fee, this is not.
Yeah, this was, this was on the fee.
And I would say anybody, council or Adi owns property, falls under the same guidelines as.
Per se. Well, it's the council, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I make a motion, we approve this.
Excuse me, just a second. I have a motion on the floor that we approve. Motion 2014 dash two, I have a second. I have a second from Council for this rule. Okay, further discussion from Blue Genus?
I might add, it's like, all these rules on here, I talked to a couple of other people that own the properties and they, I haven't mentioned their names as far as, Dr. Norman Newell and Doug, they're both not in favor of this vote tonight on this vicar item. I think when you go through that checklist, too, go through it, I don't know if you've read through it very carefully. On that first page, you kind of read through it, I guess we have, personally haven't read a lot of explaining, I mean, how this is all going to work.
Dennis, on the checklist, that's another item on the.
Oh, that's a different item, okay.
Yeah, we'll come back to that when we get to that point, okay? And that'll be the next item.
Okay, that's good then. But I, I'm not in favor, not, not the other people I've talked to on, or not, pardon me, just more regulations. And I think the last meeting, Harold Heider's making a really good comment of all the regulations that, on the, he's encountered and I think that's probably the deal with all the rest of us as far as just more, more regulations for things that, I think most people in the room that are, that have rentals, that are taking care of them. If there's a problem somewhere, I don't know how you can approach those rentals in particular, the owners there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to pass resolution 2014 dash two. Any further discussion from council? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Which one?
I'm going to have to abstain.
Richard?
Yes.
Delka?
No.
Struble?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Brown?
No.
Miller?
No.
Adi?
Yes.
Okay. Motion failed. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the minimal housing checklist. Dennis, do you want to address this now?
On the first page, there's several things on it, but on the first page, I'm sure some people in the room back there have other questions than I do. On the first one, it talks about ceiling must have a fire, just a rated not less than one half of gypsum board. I don't, is this supposed to be like a rated, we'd have to replace and put fire-rated gypsum board or tinfoil in some of these, like in a garage, it's mentioned in there. Kind of curious about that one. Then on the next one, the basement cellar going should be kept reasonably dry and ventilated free from rubbish. Is that going to be checked in a regular, I mean, once you rent it, you don't have complete control anymore. I don't, this is before or after? Probably needs to be checked after you rent it than before.
Don't you go in and check your apartment?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, they're all cleaned up and everything.
So, I mean, you know if somebody's got a, during the time they rented it.
Oh, yeah. But I didn't know if you're going to go back and check it during the rental period, too. That's probably what's more important.
Yeah, and that's my understanding, that it will be a continuous.
Okay. Then back on boarding, boarding in roomhouses, is this different from regular apartments, I'm assuming, on this predictor? Because they talk about separate, for male and female, separate facilities for each sex and plainly marked. Then on the last one, it's separate facilities for each sex and made, and be plainly marked. I'm kind of puzzling what this is, what this really kind of goes back to.
Can you explain that?
Isn't this a standard checklist?
It is. It came out, it's code compliant, that's all. Yeah, and a normal residence, then it'd be a family bathroom.
Am I, am I correct to assume that the boarding house, roomy houses, that would be like if you had just a room and then you came down to like a Camille Neal place?
That's correct.
It's not, it's not your traditional apartment complex?
That's correct.
I mean, because there are multiple, some of these we don't have here.
That's correct.
Okay. But like, let's say the Porter, the Porter Hotel, that'd be something that might apply in here. That'll be a check, all their apartments probably would be checked, too, I imagine.
Right.
On the next page, entrances, back to that secondary exit to the ground, shall be available in case of fire. Is there like ladders, like metal ladders kind of put in? I mean, if you had like a stairway going up, you'd have a secondary exit. So, we need to, we need to install extra stairways or that type of thing? I'm kind of curious what that one's going to be about.
Chris, would you address that again, too?
Again, that keeps out of the code and for family residents, typically they won't be required to have a fire escape from the upstairs. The stairs going down and right out the door would be sufficient.
But if it's just an upstairs apartment, they wouldn't have to have.
As long as there's, as long as there's a stairs that goes down and right up to the outside, directly to the outside, doesn't go through somebody else's apartment or something else, somebody else's bedroom or something like that.
So, if there's like four apartments upstairs and they share the same common stairway that leads right to outside.
That's correct.
There's no.
One would be sufficient, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Then on the, back on garbage and trash receptacles, this looks like that, according to this checklist, we need to provide them, the landlords need to provide lease stuff, trash receptacle for each tenant? Is that correct?
As long as the trash receptacle's there, I don't care who pays for it, but if the occupant is not willing to, then landlord provides it. So, there's something to put trash in so it goes outside.
Well, we have to get them inspected. Once we get them rented, then they'd have to be re-inspected if the landlord don't provide them?
No, we're not going to do inspection weekly.
Okay. On the lighting, back on that one, it said every room should have a ceiling, electric outlet and a duplex out in a wall or floor. Some of these places that were wired in the 60s, a lot of times, they, they didn't have very many ceiling lights. They, they used a lot of side lights. I think if that was defined to that or?
Because of that, that's why there's either a fixture in ceiling or wall receptacles that could accommodate the lighting.
Like a hanging light?
A hanging light or, like you said, there's some, some of those old homes built in the 60s didn't have any ceiling lights at all. They just depended on lamps and lighting around the side.
Thank you, Chris.
It says four, at least two wall or floor outlets. So, you read that as they can either have a ceiling outlet or two wall outlets?
Yes.
That's how I'm reading it.
Yeah.
On the next one, on ventilation, kind of in the second part, it talks about four air changes per hour, except in the toilet compartments. So, we got to have like an air exchanger. I guess I'm just kind of lost on what this all means, basically. I mean, I kind of got the drift of it, but when we get down to, get down to detail, it's kind of hard to follow.
Again, it's building code language and, and as long as there's an air exchanger in there, furnace, air cleaners provide air exchanges. If the room or if the house is heated with only a electric plug-in stove, a little heaters or something like that, that doesn't exchange the air. So, this is going to require a forced air furnace or some, some conditioning equipment that will provide air exchanges, either that, leave the windows open.
About four furnaces, is that the old style? That doesn't exchange?
No, sir.
Keep the windows open? You saying you can keep the windows open, Chris?
Yes.
But that kind of contradicts, like when you got to have a set of degree temperature rack on this other one, somewhere right around here. What I guess is summary.
Of course, did you have central heat or some type of, just circulate heat essentially?
I guess in summer, you see, it's kind of, I couldn't follow it all for sure. I don't know if Paul Russell, you did, but there's a lot, there'll be a lot of questions that come up on each inspection. In some places, I'm no problem at all, but sure. Anyway, I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got one quick question for you, Chris.
You, Chris.
You made reference to heat exchange per rooms. So, what is the standing on the floor furnace? Because some of these old homes do have working floor furnaces.
Well, it's, it's within the house. So, the air, air exchanges within the home, okay? So, if it's, if you, of all you've got, at first, but you've got no way to get outside air coming in or the inside air going out, then.
So, would like a window in the, a window in a bedroom be sufficient?
Yes, yes.
Because like I said, you know, a floor furnace is what I know.
Building, building code, it requires you have openable windows, right? So, you exchange the air or mechanical air exchangers, either or. So, if you've got the floor furnace, then you've got windows.
Okay.
Those are open.
One other question. Like you said, would you, you'd inspect it before tenants would move in, like you said, on, say like.
That's preferable to me, you know, but, but again, we're trying to. That's preferable to me, you know, but, but again, we're trying to keep on a schedule that, that, that will work for all of us. So, even if you've got tenants in or occupying the home, at the end of the two-year period or whatever it's going to be, then, then we'll make arrangements to go in there even if they're, even if the rental is occupied.
Okay, so where I don't really bother my tenants, I stay out of their houses, say you go in there and you find they call up the windows shut, am I at fault?
No, no.
For their problems or what they did?
No, no.
Okay, just some simple thoughts or comments, because you know, I leave my tenants be unless they absolutely need, if they need something, I fix it, but otherwise, you know, I don't mingle in their business.
I got this.
So.